So I started investigating the company, got a quote from them for 30 machines, and it's about 50% less than what I paid for Apple. Our rotation is up next year, so I really was not wanting to buy 30 new machines and then get our rotation out of sync with the rest of it.
These are used machines.
Yeah, so they're used machines, full one-year warranty, which is perfect. Because when we're looking next year for new machines and looking at selling the machines back, the warranty on the machines will be up. We're not really out anything less than what we were before. So Homer and I decided that was probably the best thing to do and save us like $13,000 to $15,000 to get the new machine, actually the used machines, which are three-year-old machines. So they're about the same as what we currently have. And so it really just seemed like a no-brainer as opposed to spending $26,000 or $27,000, spending a little more than $10,000, about $13,000 is what it ended up being. And then that gets me through the next year, and then hopefully this company actually also buys machines back. So when I was talking to the sales rep, I let her know that, it's like, hey, next year, beginning of the year, we're going to start looking at selling our machines back so we can do a refresh, and you help me out now and give me good prices, and we may be able to get with a whole lot of machines next year as long as you can come in competitively with the bidding process. So I'll go a couple, or about nine months from that process.
Can you refresh my memory? About a year ago, we started some new program, or maybe two years ago, where I thought the computers we were using, we would give them back to them, and then we would get all new ones.
That was, that was, this is year four of that coming up. So that was three years ago we did that, so this is the fourth year of that four-year cycle.
So would we switch and go to a different company potentially, or is that what you're thinking about?
Well, for selling the machines, Apple really doesn't buy the machines back. They gave me the name of a company from, I forget where it was, where we got a bid from them saying, here's our inventory, what will you give us for these machines? And then I found another place and did the same thing. Here's our inventory of machines. We compared the two, and we went with the best deal, and so we sold all those machines back. Homer took that money that we made from selling the machines, put it into either whatever...
We put it in a separate fund to handle with the buyback, or with the lease payments going forward. We split it up over the four lease payments, well, three, because we didn't get the check-in time for the first lease payment. So we split it up over the last three, well, actually, the last one will go out. We'll make the last lease payment in June. We'll use the computers next year, and then the cycle would be, the cycle would be up. I know, it seems like it was yesterday that we did all that, we did all that work and...
Yeah, this is four years ago this April, I believe. So this coming year, April was four years when we did that.
I know, it does.
Yeah, it flies. And I guess I'll put this out there, I made a promise to Keith that I'm going to try my best, and I use the word guaranteed in Keith, we're going to get five years out of the machines that we get. Right now, what's holding me up is, we were kind of at a place where the memory in the machines was about half what we really needed. The kids are running out of space, and it's making it difficult for all that multimedia stuff that they do. The next time, I'm going to make sure and I'm going to look at, the machines should have four times the memory that they have now.
Already automatically doubled.
Yeah, automatically doubled.
We're one year bottom, four years ago.
I'm hoping by the time it's all said and done, when we actually are looking, come this spring, the machines will actually have four times the memory. And then I'm going to be more than comfortable getting a fifth year out of the machines and going a year without a lease payment. But like I said, right now, the cost of the memory, it would have been substantially more, and it's really hard right now. Even my teachers, with all the multimedia and stuff that they have on there, they're constantly coming to me, it's like, I have no space left on my computer. I'm sorry, you're going to have to delete some stuff or do something. And I know teachers hate to do that, because they're deleting things that maybe they potentially will have to either recreate or they would want to use again. But with the next cycle of machines, I'm going to make sure that the memory is going to get us through at least five years, so we can go a year without a lease payment.
So the basic machine, three years ago, was 64 gigs.
Sixty-four gigs.
Sixty-four gigs, and now that same machine is 128 gigs, so it's already doubled in three years on their own. We anticipate that even being more...
At 256. I'm hoping for 256, and I may even price out at 256 and see what we can do.
Got some questions, Jeff. On the price, any idea where we're going to be at price-wise on the new computer systems next year with the additional gig, or they stayed about the same price with the additional memory, so they're roughly the same as what they were four years ago with the additional memory?
The prices have stayed real consistent. I think they may even have gone down $50 from what we did four years, or three and a half years ago.
And then on the 30 units that you anticipate that you're going to need, there are $26,000, $27,000 new, $13,000 used. What is the trade-in value on those?
Again, that fluctuates.
I know it fluctuates, but what's ballpark numbers?
I would say, looking on eBay, and that's where I usually look at to see what people on eBay are selling for. And eBay, this particular model was probably around $300 is what you'd buy for off eBay. Or, sorry, not, I'm sorry, it's about $500 what you'd buy off eBay. That's eBay, me, as a general consumer, selling it.
They're not going to give us $500.
No, I would guess, when we're trading machines.
It's close enough, it's close enough for numbers. So you got $300 on trade-in on 30 units, so on $13,000, it's going to cost $10,000 for the one year, roughly, ballparking to do those. If we bought them today, how much memory do they have?
Right now, they'd be the 128.
They'd be the 128.
And not 38.
So we get them, I'm just trying to figure in my head, we're rough numbers, are we better off to buy new if we get double the memory and we get...
Five years.
Five years out of them.
Well, see, we're talking, the machines that we're buying are three-year-old machines. So if we were to get five, then they'd be eight-year-old machines by the time...
No, I'm talking by, instead of buying those, buying brand-new.
Oh, oh, I got you.
I think what you run into is, one of the things we've tried to do is make the management of the whole system, this whole buying cycle, is simple, I guess, or just make it, when I got here, we had like five or six different schedules from the laptops we had bought over time, and it was, it was, it took, that's one of those things that took me a little bit of time to figure out and manage. And one of the things Jeff and I have talked about, Keith, is really keeping those, keeping that process manageable, making it, being cost-effective, but also making it manageable and everybody involved. I think the use, in this particular case, if we were, if we were a different part of the cycle, plus, and the thing with Apple, and this is what I have learned over four and a half years here, is just when you think you got your thumb on it, they'll change it. And if Jeff's got an inkling, right, and what I've also learned is, Jeff's got his ear to the ground about a lot of those issues. If Jeff says that he's got an inkling that they're going to raise that memory even more by next spring, I'm willing to, I'm willing to wait, because more often than not, over four years, when there's been a rumbling, it's always been personal stuff we've been talking about home with iPhones and iPads and everything else, more times than not, he's had a pretty good, he's had a pretty good read on the situation, and it's came out according to what he said. If we're talking about buying these machines now new, you're at 128 now for the same price we paid for three and a half years ago. If we wait a year, and we get those machines at 250, and we can double that memory and still hit that same price point a year from now, which, if there's something I've noticed just even in trends when I look, when I'm reading things, that's the trend that things are going, the memory is jumping and the prices are staying steady because they've got their manufacturing figured out, that's going to be an awfully big deal a year from now, because I've got two kids in school and other school districts, and I can tell you right now, our kids do a lot more multimedia work than my kids have ever done, and I know that chews up memory under the computer.
I don't argue any of those, I'm just thinking, just asking a question.
And I went back and forth, I've probably spent two to three weeks going back and forth like, what's going to be the best way, and I, I really think, for consistency's sake, because, not that I would necessarily forget, but come next year, I would have to remember, oh, these 30 machines, I got to remember to keep away from the sell-back and...
I get it, tracking would be, would be more difficult, I get it. And I like the idea of keeping the system uniform. It does, it does help with all the...
And I don't think at the end of the day, it's going to wind up costing us even as significant of that $10,000, what we would have spent in our return would be if we try and push those out to the end of a cycle as new. If they do hit 128, you know, if it's at 128, we buy these machines, and next year all the machines we buy are 256, then all of a sudden you've got to find a happy place for those 30 machines, that they're going to be able to do the same amount of work.
You know, you're going to follow, if you're going to need the 30, I...
Right, exactly.
Yeah, we may be, we may be, you may be having entirely a different discussion roughly a year from now.
Yeah, because three and a half years ago, I thought I had it mapped out, and all of a sudden, our enrollment, we have fewer kids going to four counties, and our enrollment was higher than it was projected to be three and a half years ago. So it kind of bit me a little bit, but I didn't want to buy 50 extra machines and then they sit in boxes for four years.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jeff on that one?
Okay, so Mr. Slattery.
Oh, lucky me. All right, middle school, high school principal report. Of course, it's been extremely busy, as it always is the last couple months of school. On 4/13, of course, we had a teacher in-service. The middle school, high school side covered mostly the high schools at work site review, which has been a big topic for us this year. Once every five years, being a high schools at work's participant, we have to go through it and validate the fact that we are implementing all of these different steps and star programs and, and high expectations, additional support for our students. So that process has been completed, and of course, it was quite a task, but thank you to all the teachers and of course, the students, and Mrs. Koby for heading up that report. From 4/18 to 5/6, we had our Ohio State mandated air tests, those were administered. We actually had six days of required testing of our students with an additional week of makeup test, and as many, you know, we went on a two-hour relay schedule, which really helped out, and I appreciate, you know, Mr. Lisi, of course, working with us. That's one of the complications of having a K-12 building and sharing all our resources is, you know, we really have to work as a team, so I'm glad we liked each other. On 4/20, GMC principals met, and there's a few hot topics on there. We typically try to meet once a month or once every two months. I will say that, first of all, the GMC cheer competition, always an amazing event, if you've never been to that, we actually packed the Fiennes College Gymnasium, and it's amazing how much support goes into that. And of course, they decided to host us again next year, so we made that official. Also, the pay scales of officials that the GMC uses, that's going up, and that's kind of a competition thing right now. We have to be able to compete with other conferences in the area, and it may not seem like a big deal, but we're going up $5 per official across the board, and we think about how many games we actually host across all of our different sporting events, it ends up being quite a large chunk of money. I think it's right around $2,600 that our athletic department has to carry. And our, we have a pretty healthy athletic department, community, town, sport, but that can be tough on some of our other GMC schools. And what really stinks is, we're still one of the lowest paying. You know, it's like, these two little public schools now are paying their football officials starting next year $100 a game, and we used to bump ours up, I think, to $70. You know, so there's a lot of competition on competing officials, and it's actually a pretty big deal for our conference, making sure that we're being competitive and paying that. The athletic department, we attended the OHSA regular, or excuse me, regional meeting, and that's a big deal too, because there's two things going on at OHSA when it comes to affecting us in our region. Number one, there's always that idea of, you know, making sure kids are eligible, and I know that's a suburban, urban issue, a lot of transfers, kids moving in and out, but they always want to keep us up to date on that. And of course, the idea of visual documentation, they're trying to get their coaches to have instant access to student files, physicals, you know, kids that are injured, they don't want to have to go search for a paper or a folder or dig through it, they want to be able to pull up exactly what allergies this kid has, what medications they have, and that way, when they're being transported to the hospital, or being taken to the hospital by, by a coach, that we have that instant access. Four County Grisner, National Technical Honor Society banquet was held on 4/28. Congratulations again to Amber Carwild, she's a senior this year, she's been a part of that for two years. And then of course, congratulations to Molly Feller for being inducted into the National Technical Honor Society. And I know that Denny and I went over to that event, always a great event, a lot of kids from a lot of different schools being recognized for their accomplishments, and of course, food's always great, isn't it?
It is awesome.
We've really been pushing in our school district, especially, you know, the middle school, high school level, this idea of, let's stop selling so many items for fundraisers, let's have events. And I want to give a shout-out to our freshman and sophomore advisors and classes. Our freshman class, they actually hosted a garage sale last week, and I don't have exact numbers, but all I have to know is this, overhead is pretty much nothing, and I know they brought in more than $2,000, it might have been closer to $3. And you think about a three-day event, I know there's a lot of preparation time and effort on those families that spend their time doing that, but again, what a great way to make money, pretty much have almost 100% profit on that. The sophomore class, they hosted a dodgeball tournament a couple weeks ago. Is it Lisi?
Champions.
Champions. So anyway, that was an awesome event, you know, it's one of those events kind of like the Donkey Basketball, it will grow, because the kids that participated, the parents and community members that participated, not only was it fun to watch, it was fun to play in, and it was, it was fun competition. And it's bonus, of course, that we were the champions. Did I say that already? I have to make sure.
I have metal mouth.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, they found out doing it again, and we expect that to grow, because a lot of the kids, again, you walk around the school, and they were saying, oh man, we should have participated, we should have put a team together.
I didn't even know anything about it until the day of.
Yeah, and I think, again, we need to get better at advertising. I know a lot of people rely on Facebook still, and if you're connected the right way, you get it, but at the same time, I think we need to make sure that we're doing a better job advertising the community. Still, you know, it's good to have a flower here or there in the community, but again, kudos to those two groups, and we really appreciate the time and effort they put into that. The academic team, of course, traveled to Chicago on April 30th to compete in the national academic team competition. Another great showing for Hicksville, we placed 45th out of 80 teams. I know that Kate Murphy, I believe, finished 13th, she was the 13th best competitor in the competition, and you know, what a great experience for our kids. And I mean, it's not just the fact that they get to Chicago, but they, it's a true national tournament. I mean, they're competing against teams from Oklahoma, Maryland, you know, Alabama, I mean, they're from all over the place. And again, another great showing for our kids, and congratulations to them, of course, our coach, Mrs. Lane. Future Appreciation Week was last week. We actually had a nice luncheon, provided to our teachers through peas and carrots, so thank you to peas and carrots for providing that food, and of course, thank you to our teachers. Senior Recognition Day was also on the third of Rotary, the top 10% attended Rotary, they did a nice little speech, kind of shared who they are, who their parents are, what they've accomplished, and of course, their future goals. So a shout-out to, again, our top 10%, Travis Lysit, Zach Betts, Eden Copeland, Emily Hornish, Kate Murphy, and Scott Pierce. Senior project presentations were completed last Thursday, on the fifth. You know, this is just kind of one of those final steps for our seniors in completing kind of their academic goals here at Hicksville. And I will say this, I would think that a majority of our kids did a great job with those senior presentations. I mean, you're always going to have a few kids that maybe don't quite reach that level we want, because our expectations are high, but I'll tell you what, the group of kids' students that I judged, and I know that Mr. Countryman spoke with you, they did an amazing job. They, I mean, they came in there, they overcome a lot of fear in speaking and presenting and talking to people they don't know, and again, I just want to shout-out to a lot of those seniors, and, well, all the seniors were clean, but there's some special seniors in there that just did an amazing job, and I appreciate their efforts in that. Miss Reese, eighth grade class, they went to Fossil Park in Sylvania, Ohio, another great experience, they actually have to, it's near the, the, oh gosh, the quarry there, and they bring all the extra dirt, rock and stuff, and kind of dump it in this field pretty much, and the kids can go through there, and they're actually finding true fossils, what they call stalagmites, and all that kind of stuff, so...
Trail bikes.
Trail bikes, yeah.
Trail bikes.
Exactly, so an amazing opportunity for our kids, and they really enjoyed it. Junior, senior prom, of course, was this past weekend, it was a rainforest theme, and again, the community members that go out and view what we do for prom every year, it's pretty amazing. I will say that, you know, one of my favorite things to do is to talk to the visiting students that our students have invited in, and typically, they're like, their jaws are in the ground, they can't believe our prom's here, you know? And it's nice to hear that, you know, again, we kind of go above and beyond to provide those opportunities for our kids. So a big thank you to Lisa Friend and Steph Mazur, the class advisors, for putting on the amazing event. Also, Judy McKenna and Laura Schall were in charge of post-prom, which was at Bryan at the YUCA, and we appreciate all the time and effort that their crew did in preparing that opportunity for our students also. Today, AP Tools students took a field trip to Fanic Robots in Rochester Hills up in Michigan. Fanic Robots, those are the yellow robots that you see, I mean, that's kind of the best way to describe it on commercials, that you see automation, and of course, AP Tool, they actually develop the attachments that go on the Fanic Robots that work in all these factories and industry across the United States. So that's a big field trip for our students that attended that today. And of course, Mr. Payne's environmental science class visited the, I want to put March Wildlife Area, that's not right, the Marsh Wildlife Area. And again, at this time of the year, I believe they say there's over 100 different types of birds that are flying, you know, from one point to another across the Midwest or even North America that stop in there, so a great opportunity to see that. I have a bunch of future events, and I apologize, I'm not going to go over to one of them, but I'm going to hit the main ones, of course. The first one is, of course, the District Art Show will be on the 13th of May, and that's the same day as the Senior Citizens Banquet, which I know Mr. Countryman is going to hit on. I know that the Four County Grisner Recognition Day is on May 5th, or excuse me, May 20th, it's a Friday, that's an amazing event, if you've never attended, you get the chance to do that, I mean, you tend to forget how big of a school Four County really is, because it occupies space for 22 different districts in the area. High school awards programs, we have the, the High School Awards 9 through 11 is 1:00 PM in the gymnasium on the 25th of May. The Senior Awards Banquet will be that night at 7:00 PM. The Middle School Awards Program will be at 1:00 PM. And then of course, District Sports Physicals are on the 26th after school in the Commons. The last day of school is the 27th, to our early release. And then of course, we get into graduation, we have the mandatory commencement practice in the gymnasium on June 2nd, followed by baccalaureate practice, which then baccalaureate service is at 6:30 PM, and I believe that's at the Methodist Church this year. And then of course, commencement is at 2:00 in the high school gymnasium on June 5th. I'm done. A lot going on. And I skipped a lot, I wanted to know that, so I apologize, everyone's parents and students. Travis, good luck, finish quicker than that place.
This was informational with the fossils and the birds, I just take notes over here.
You were inspired, weren't you?
I was, yes. Thanks, Steph. I had quite a few items, I'll go through them quickly, but there's some things I wanted to touch on and stress, I think are important. First of all, testing and state assessments are completed. I want to give a big shout-out to our staff and students, not only for the way that they worked during the test, but in the preparations leading up to the test, which is critical. I also want to commend our student, our student body, grades three through six, I'm speaking for our side of the building, we were really happy with the effort. And I've said to teachers and I've said to the kids, that I feel like if you do your due diligence in preparing for these assessments, it often comes down to putting in your effort that they have to test. So that's their game night, if you will, if you want to use a sports analogy, and we were really happy with the effort from our kids. None of us were happy with our report cards last year, we've taken some steps to try to rectify that situation, both in how we report our data, those things along those lines, but also in preparing for this, this, we can have two weeks of testing. One of the things, we brought Bruce Boguski in, who is, how many of you want to call him a sports psychologist slash motivational speaker? He came in and spoke to the student body, grades 312, and we got a really good reaction from the kid, just, his presentation was called "The Testing Zone," just gave him a bunch of little techniques and stuff, it was really good. Miss Mann, our guidance counselor on the elementary side, always puts on what I refer to as her testing pep assembly to get 3rd through 6th graders revved up. She does that always on Friday before we kick off the assessments, the final one week. Something that we've been doing since I came over to Hicksville is, we call it effort tickets. We tell the kids, if we catch you working really hard while you're working on your assessment, we write their name on a little rap of the ticket and drop it in a bowl or whatever, and they withdraw eight to 10 kids who ended up in this pile from every grade level, and they come down to the office for a quick ice cream tree at 2:00. We announce and make a big deal out of it, as Mr. Countryman said, we go yell over them in the office and, you know, just make a big deal out of them. So, and again, you can reward effort, and you can make sure, if you can't help them on the test, you can't help them with a word, you can't read anything, but you can reward their effort, and, you know, anything, any little thing helps. Along the effort of rewarding kids for working hard, we are taking every student in grades three through six roller skating tomorrow. We have a morning group with the 3rd and 4th grade, afternoon group with the 5th to 6th grade, and we're going to load them up on a bus in the morning, we're going to take them roller skating for a couple hours and come back, and then have a, they'll have the rest of their normal day wherever that's going to be. So teachers ask me if they can wear jeans when they go to CDS, but if you wear jeans, you have to skate, so we'll see on that. And again, real quick on testing, this man, Rachel Mann, our guidance counselor, is tremendous in what she does. She, I sleep well, and I know she's got things under control, doing a nice job on testing over there. She's got a nice resource for us, it went well. I'm interested to see the results, but I will say, it's nice not handling all those, the paper tests, you have to check in, check out, mail back, I mean, that was ridiculous process, I don't keep going through that, it was ridiculous. So that's the upside of the computer-based assessments. I am hoping that this year our results turn around a little bit, because the device is a little more familiar to our kids, time will tell on that. Another thing is, like Mr. Sidder said, thank you to everybody in the building, from the cooks to the custodians, to, you know, secretaries, teachers, because it takes a lot to put on to assess. We have kids testing every nook and cranny, because every kid on a 504 IEP, it's small group, which is like two or three kids, or a one-on-one. We have kids all over the place, testing with test proctors, along with classrooms testing the candy bar. It is a huge undertaking, put all that together, and the whole building stood upside down for two and a half weeks, but our kids worked their tails off, and we're happy about how it went. Okay, I'm kind of excited about that approach Keith and Homer a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, about school supplies. Every year, you see elementary school supply in the paper or whatever, on websites and things, every school typically you see things like hand sanitizer, Ziploc bags, Lysol wipes, Kleenexes, things like that. I thought, you know, I wondered if we could take advantage of the school's bulk purchasing power and save our parents some money in the meantime. So Mr. Bassett, of course, kind of my go-to guy with stuff like this, did some research on bulk pricing, and we really were happy with what we got back from him, and with four things specifically addressing the hand sanitizer, Lysol wipes, the Kleenexes, the Ziploc baggies. We got a pretty good deal from this, I talked with Keith and Homer, we're going to remove all those items from our student supply list, so 5th through 6th, those parents will not have to buy those things, keep that money in their pockets, and we can, we can affordably, and I can speak, honestly, we can affordably, as a school, supply those things to our classrooms as needed by buying them in bulk and having the teachers go get them as they need them during the year. I just think it makes more sense to do it that way. So we're going to, we're going to try it this year, I think, hopefully it goes over well. We can save our community members some money, and at the same time, I think it's a great idea. So thanks to Mr. Bassett for that. For the first time since I've been here, we are going to hold elementary awards assemblies by multiple grade levels. So on Friday, May 20th, grades 1 through 3, their assembly will be from 8:15 until 9:00 in the morning in the auxiliary gym. The same day, on the 20th, grades 4 through 6 will be from 9:30 to 10:30. Typical awards would be like perfect attendance, honor roll, top accelerator reader prizes, things like that. Just trying to bring some attention to our students from an academic standpoint, some of their accomplishments that they've worked hard toward during their school year, and we're inviting our parents to come in to watch that, take pictures and things like that, make a big deal out of it. Hopefully it goes over well. Hopefully it goes over well, like, you know, it's a good thing to get parents in the building and seeing our kids doing well, doing well. If parents have a question, like they need to get work off, they can contact their homeroom teacher or Ms. Mann, and, you know, if you want to know if your, if your son or daughter is getting an award and you should go out work, we'll be happy to help, absolutely, we understand our work schedules are, okay? Um, today was second, our, since we've been here, that's our, our second grade grandparents' day was this morning, and to say it was a success is probably putting it lightly, we had, um, almost a hundred and twenty people here in attendance this morning, and they, our visitors enjoyed a musical performance from our second grade led by Mrs. Chamberlain, it was fantastic, uh, the kids are engaged, and they were, they dressed really nice, they were, they were into it. And then they stayed for lunch, the grandparents stayed for lunch with the kids, and, and it was, it was great, glad they're here and hopefully they enjoy it, and big thanks to Mrs. Chamberlain, Mrs. Kaufman that were involved with that. He said something that made me think of this Lego League, um, our version of Lego League, I don't know, Matt Homrker probably speaks to this a little bit, we bought some robotic kits, uh, this is something we've been looking at for a couple years, and, uh, we had some funding to do this. Bought some robotic kits, and Mr. Farrell gave our sixth graders an assessment to test their, I guess readiness or ability to take these robotic kits, build them, and program them to perform, to perform tasks. So this has been going on for two or three weeks now, um, we're building these robots and getting ready to program them to perform tasks. So the kids actually performed well in this assessment, well enough in this assessment, because we can't have eighty kids doing this on a machinery going around. But it's an after-school program, kids stay for an hour after school on Thursdays and work with Mr. Farrell and Mr. Kaufman, so. It's been good feedback so far, um, we'll expand a little bit next year, so we're excited to offer that. A little bit of extra science work, there's some STEM education, if you would. Speaking of kids doing well, Principal's Math Club, this is something I know Keith and Claudia did. Um, when I started here, we had a hundred and eighty-seven members that year in our Principal's Math Club. Principal's Math Club, cloud, the club, these kids come down from, from whatever grade level, and they have a specific, uh, math task to perform in a time, in a, in a time, it's math facts basically, okay? Flash guards, they have to sit with Mrs. Kaufman and I do, and if they make it in the title later in the Principal's Math Club. We used, we used to do a cup of popcorn and stuff like that, and with this whole Ron Clark and this fix on this, and I told Mrs. Kaufman when she hired in, I said, "I need you to help me, you know, we're going to talk about it, we got to be about it." So I said, "We got to, we got to up this a little bit," and I said, "Here's my idea," I think she thought my idea was lame. So she said, "I'll come up with something," I said, "Oh, great," so I don't know if you've been in the witness that have heard about it. Um, apparently her adding on to my idea helped a little bit, because last year we had, we went, we went from one eighty-seven to two hundred and twenty-six members. This year, we went from two twenty-six to two hundred and seventy-nine members. That's a good thing, that's over half of our elementary school performing very well on their basic math facts. That's, that's a good thing, I mean, people that teach math, is we say, "What do you want when our kids get to?" Gosh, they have to know their math facts, we hear that all the time, so I think that's great, I think it's, you know, some, uh, some good affirmation that's working. So, once a month, then we have this Principal's Math Club dance party, and Mrs. Kaufman taught these kids this dance to, uh, MC Hammer, Help Me Out. Can't touch this, and they do this little twenty, twenty-five second dance, and they, we put them up on the tables, like Ron Clark, they dance on the tables, and grandparents, aunts and uncles, mom, dads come in one Friday a month, and they perform like four times during lunch period. Fifty, sixty kids up there dancing around, and we make, we make a big deal out of it, you know, we got the, the microphone, I will play music during lunch and stuff, and it's been really very successful, so I appreciate her taking that on and improving my lame idea, and our numbers have exploded in the last two years, so that's a good thing. All right, see, you got the Senior Citizens Banquet, okay, on the thirteenth. Um, art show is also on the thirteenth, beginning at four thirty down in the Commons, so, uh, art, artwork to purchase and, and display, and there's, uh, refreshments, assessments, all kinds of stuff. Uh, one more exciting, a couple more things here, actually, this is the last one. Um, the Hicksville Shake, uh, I know many of you are familiar with that, it's something that we've come to look forward to every year. Uh, this started the first year I was here, when we got back from Ron Clark, we had a, and we can do this here. So, you know, it's a competition, our sixth graders have our capstone project with them, and we teach them how to shake hands, make eye contact, engage an audience, engage a room, uh, make conversational skills, present themselves with charisma, things like this. Things we think, skills that aren't in the curriculum, but skills they're going to need when they leave here to compete in a, in a global job market, compete against other, other people, um, whether it's an interview process, whatever it is. So, we work hard on this all year, and then typically, we surprise them the morning of the shake, but we want to get the parents more involved. So I said, you know, this year, we're going to, we're going to try something. It's May seventeenth, this is Tuesday, and we'll start first thing in the morning, our parent, our sixth grade parents are invited to come in during the first round. That'll run, run from anywhere from eight fifteen until about ten thirty, it's always ish that day because it's kind of a crazy day, but. Uh, invite our parents to come in, they can walk through, kind of see our kids performing a little bit and things, just to see our kids, and I said, and we look forward to them being dressed for success and, and showing off their skills and presenting themselves well that day. Um, if you've read in area newspapers, a lot of other schools have picked up on this idea. Uh, it's good, it benefits the kids, and it's been a tremendous success here for the last two years, and it's next Tuesday here, so we're pretty excited. A lot, a lot goes into this day between preparing these kids to do it, um, to put in all the moving parts together, all our judges, and all our facilities and stuff, there's, there are three rounds, the first one's at the school. Uh, you're absolutely invited to come in and see it, because our kids really do an awesome job with it. Um, our judges every year overwhelmingly impressed with our, with our sixth graders. Uh, the second round is off-campus, I know where it is, but we're not going to tell, we're not, not going to announce that yet. The third round is awful, also off-campus, but by about two-ten, two-fifteen, we're going to have our finalists back here to the school. We'll have all the elementary in the big gym, and we're going to present our champion to, and they won't know, the, our finalists won't know when they'll walk in to champion this. We're going to, we're going to announce our, our champion to all elementary school. Last year we did this, it was, the gym just exploded when we did it last year, so. Um, that's Hicksville Shake, if, if you aren't, aren't able to make it in, if you go to our website that day, we have the teachers and Mr. Kaufman spent all day, and we tell the kids in the morning, you know, prepare for anything, um, and you may feel like a zoo, a zoo animal at times, because when, when you're talking to a judge, you might come up and get some video or still shot of you, put on the internet, we post our progress throughout the day and say who's advancing to the next round and things, so. If you can't come in and watch, you can follow on our website throughout the day, we'll be up there, okay? Um, all right, and just a reminder about the two-hour release dismissal on the last day of school, which is the twenty-seventh already, so. I went fast.
That might be a new record.
I think it would. Sorry, you got to brag on your kid if you're fast.
And you know what, you didn't even remind us that you were a champion in the dodgeball.
When you leave, you want to touch the medal hanging on my door, come on through. We wore them all day Monday.
Yeah, Monday we did, most of our team was staff members, Coach Smith, Klausing, two of us, Donnie, Kerna.
Did you guys go through any ice after those?
I had ice bags.
The kids love when we walk down the hall with their medals all day long.
Hey, you know, just to comment real quick, I, I think you guys did a great job rewarding the kids and just like the whole skating thing, and I hear about it all the time from the kids at home, you know, uh, the ice cream and the effort, uh, tickets and all that. You know, I guess my question is, is there anything we can do, I know we have the meal at the end of the year, but, you know, for the teachers and staffs, is there any way we can do something between now and then, like, you know, a pizza party for staff? Is there something to fund that we could do that, and I, just a thought to, you know, kind of throw out there to say, hey, you know what, thanks for doing so much to kind of motivate our kids.
Well, we have the Teacher Appreciation Week that we, we do, and of course, at the end of the picnic, we can maybe do something a little more special that day if you'd like.
I mean, it's a lot, I mean, that kind of up to everybody else, but, you know, I mean, I think everybody's working hard to, to make our kids a success.
The board and Brian does, um, breakfast and everything for the teachers during Teacher Appreciation, make it work out well, they're just like bagels and muffins and coffee and juice, but it's kind of a nice little gesture in the center of the morning before you, kind of need it.
Kind of need to do something, you know, something kind of, something we haven't done in the past, uh, you know?
I'd also like to say you guys do a really great job involving parents in this, I know my babysitter first saw it in the, she videos, she got to see it all. I think it's neat that we, you know, incorporate the parents in being able to come to the art show, the award show, the math, uh, the Principal's Math Club, it makes a difference.
That show off the kids to parents, let them know what we're doing here.
And your list is long because there are a lot of great things going on.
Sounds good to hear.
And you want, you want all our teachers to be recognized, and that's the thing, it's like, you go through and you see all these opportunities our stu, our students are being provided by their teacher, and, and you want to toot their horn and ensure that, so.
Mr. Shaker, are you going to be smarter than a fifth grader?
I've nothing to bother. I've heard rumblings, but I was not, I was not.
That's one of our fifth grade teams pretty, uh, is pretty creative, to say the least, and they do all kinds of stuff, uh, leading up to testing. They do an amazing race where they have teams of the graders run all, if you've seen that on TV, they run all over the building performing tasks and stuff, and, uh, and Mr. Robyn does one, he calls it the Carl Cup, I don't know what that means, but they compete for this Stanley Cup looking trophy and the owner of the points by answering ma, math questions in class, which typically is not fun when you're competing for the Carl Cup. So, they've also put together, uh, Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader?, and it's during one of the last two weeks of, and I, he actually emailed me a minute ago a little bit ago for that exact thing, because he was going to have a shitty one, I said, "No." But it's going to be a competition, they're having parents and things come in, and it's going to be like an Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader? game show, so I'm sure it'll be fun, because that group's fun.
Going along with this, I mentioned to you, um, a couple months ago, I would like to see the teachers come in and present to us here. I know we've done that in the past, I've been to some of them, but I would love to see, you know, have Miss Reese come in and talk about, you know, what she's doing, or, you know, just the different groups, you know, it was neat when Kate was here talking about the academic group, I would like to see more of that.
Kind of helps Keith things in perspective, you know, we're here for the kids and you kind of hear from the teachers, I always, I always liked when there was presentation from the teachers.
Yes, four county report. Yeah, well, mine would be a lot shorter. Craig said he'd appreciate that.
I would too.
Uh, first want to thank Hicksville for coming over there for like the National Honor Society or the Technical Honor Society. Um, it's really good that the, the home district comes over there and supports that, and it is a very nice evening, um, that they put on for the kids to give, to honor them and go through things. Um, as Jeff said, senior recognition of their four county graduation day is May twentieth, I believe it's eight A M. Um, there's roughly two thousand people in there for that, um, it's a big deal, and, uh, great way to honor, honor the students that are graduating. Board news wise, uh, this coming, uh, next Thursday, we have a board meeting, we'll tour the, uh, house that was completed by the junior, uh, senior carpentry class, the plumbing class, and electrical class, and housing. Um, and then they just selected, uh, next year's project this last month, and it's actually interesting, I didn't realize how they did that, but you submit, if you want to have your house built, you submit requirements that they have S B X radius, miles of the, of the school district and for travel time and stuff, but the carpentry teachers don't get to see who it is, or it's, it's all blind. You don't know whose house it's going to be or who, who they are, and then, uh, the winner of that dinner, there's more than one entry, they draw from that, and they award that house the best bits, but how it's going to work for the school, so, so that's pretty neat. Um, we're in the middle of negotiations right now, um, really no news to report on that, and we're still in the middle of it. Um, we are, uh, we do have some deficit spending issues, pretty significant ones. Um, the state has cut out some of the funding, or at least this year we didn't get a lot of funding left, and we're going to do pretty significant def, deficit spending this year, we have money in the bank, four county has money in the bank, but it will be completed through very quickly. Um, so there, there will be a levy on the ballot, uh, this, this coming fall, if it does not appear that, uh, that we're going to get anything from the state themselves, that's that. And, um, in fact, we're pretty certain that's, that's the case, um, so, uh, so we want them to be really good financially. Um, and to speak to that, it's, excuse me, it's either nineteen eighty-three or nineteen eighty-eight is the last time four county asked for, uh, a levy for those. So it's been thirty years, it's been thirty years, so, you know, since the levies have been asked for. There'll probably be one now, um, levy, which generates roughly three million dollars, uh, to the district, though they will give, give, give changes in the state funding side. School's got more technical, there's, there's that one. Uh, the normal, uh, hiring and retirements, you know, and everything else is standard, those are the big, the biggest points.
Okay, well, just to tag a little bit, um, on the Hicksville Shake thing, that the sixth graders work on that all year long. That's not just something they do for one day, they're doing different things with them all year long leading up to that. And then, um, I attend a monthly superintendent meeting at the E S C, and the last time I went, I got hit up by several superintendents, it was like, "Thanks a lot, countrymen, uh, we're sending a group of teachers to Atlanta." So there was like two or three schools in the four county area that were sending groups of teachers down to Atlanta to go through the Ron Clark experience for the, the two-day professional development, so they were saying it sarcastically, but they had, uh, you know, art in service that we hosted last fall sparked a lot of interest, we still get calls, and we have comments made all the time about it, so they have, uh, consented some of the superintendents, and they're sending groups of teachers down there, so that is a good thing, and we're really happy about that, I think that, uh, you know, it's important to note that, I know Washington local school, which is up like to leave our, I think, they were doing, uh, going to Ron Clark before we had him come here. But for the most part, all the other people in this four county area, getting their start from us sending, uh, having him come here and us sending our teachers down there, and what they're seeing, uh, the good things happening from that, so. We should be really proud of that because I think that that says a lot about the good things that's happening here. And along with that, uh, we have subs that come into the building all the time, in fact, I forget, I don't want to reveal who the person's name was, but they said the other day during the, uh, senior, um, project judging, uh, that they love coming here the most because our kids are so respectful and so polite, and there's a huge difference, uh, from a lot of other schools, that they, they don't see that so much with a lot, a lot of kids. Majority of our kids are like this, so that's a, that was a great compliment. So I think that's super neat here, all that stuff. I didn't want to mention the Senior Citizens Banquet this Friday, and of course, you don't, you're not senior citizens, but you're more than welcome to come. Uh, that will be starting at, is that nine-thirty or nine? I think it's nine. I have nine-thirty in my notes, but I think it's nine. At nine o'clock, and so if you can make it, that would be great if you could come, uh, we would love to have you there. Uh, that's my, one of my favorite events, we started that a long time ago back in the old building, and it's one of, uh, you know, it's one of my favorite events. It's a great thing to get those, uh, senior citizens in here and to let them know the great things that we're doing and show off our kids. I know when we first did that, they all thought there was some kind of ulterior motive that we were going to ask them for money or something, and we've never done that. Uh, it's always about bragging about our kids and thanking them for being such great supporters of our school. And so, we love that day, and we always coincide that now, nine o'clock, you know, we always coincide that now with our district art show. So the two art teachers have artwork displayed down the whole hall in the windows, and there's just hundreds of pieces of art displayed, so we, uh, our building looks really great that day, and of course, our custodians, um, have everything, just spots shine really good, so. It's a great day, so if you can make it, we'd love to have you. Um, you have heard me, and I will, and I will say this with all appropriate language, because I'll tell you, this has been quite the project. The safety plan for our district, the O D, O D E changed some requirements a year and a half ago, and, uh, so I got right on that. I mean, I had done it once when I first started as superintendent, and I had to update it, we did it, no problem. Then they sent out some new requirements, I got on the. Then they sent out some new requirements, I got on it right away. They added a lot of different pieces, like we had to have a site map and, and we had to have different, just different pieces that they were requiring. So I got that all done, I submitted it to ODE and I kept checking my safe account for months, you know, it just said submitted, submitted, you know? And so this fall, I had somebody call from Homeland Security and they said, "You aren't compliant." I said, "Well, how do you know that?" You know, because I've been checking my safe account and it just kind of took me wrong a little bit, so that's kind of blew that, that off for a while because I thought, "Okay, I'm responsible for answering to ODE." You know, I hadn't heard about this new guy. So long story short, the new guy, he's very nice. I've met him, he came here because I got tired of his calls one day and I finally called him back and I'm like, "Where are we not compliant?" And he said one thing. I'm thinking, "So this whole thick thing and there's only one little thing you're saying I'm not compliant on?" So I had him come and Eric worked with me and we came and basically, I think what they wanted, they wanted it in their template. And this guy was hired by ODE, through Homeland Security, to make sure that schools, he had a certain area that he had to cover, are compliant. So we took their template and I redid everything and changed it to fit us. And basically, our plan is very similar to this, it's just now they're wording, we still have the same place where we go, if we have to evacuate and so on. So I did this and Eric did this with me the one day and then we met with him. And I'm happy to say that all we need is one little signature yet from the, our chief, fire chief of town Scott Kramer, which he's coming tomorrow morning. And Dave Gillespie from Homeland Security has seen this, he said, "Once you submit that signature page, you are compliant." So I'm really happy about that. And so there's actually three of them, because we have three IRN numbers, we have to have three plans. They're identical, it's just the name fits the school. So Hicksville High School, Middle School, and then Hicksville Mentory School, and then there's one for the district. So you're welcome to look at these tonight if you want. They are secure documents, though these documents are not eligible to anyone because they contain information about our safety. So if you'd like to peruse those tonight, you can do that, but the bill will have to stay with me. So I'm glad that project is over because it was a long, long ordeal, but it seems to be what they wanted now, so I'm really thankful about that. I will also take a look and figure out something for what you suggested, Craig, and I'll get back with you guys and I'll figure something out on that. Then I also wanted to talk a little bit about our potential building project. And first of all, the, the first thing I want to say about our building project, because there's, you know, small town, you hear about these rumors and people saying, "Well, your enrollment's the same, you know, how do you need to build on?" It's not about our, our enrollment, it's about our program. And so, you know, as I've been saying for over a year, with the, with the preschool that I really would like to, to work on, I see that being something that the, the state's gonna be sending our way in the very near future. We've always tried to be proactive. Travis and I have had numerous conversations before we ever even thought about a potential building project on how can we meet the needs of our, our little kids in our community? Because they're coming into preschool, I mean, to kindergarten and they're not, they're, they're behind a year, two years, not every, not all of them, but a lot of them are before they ever start. And then it's like a catch-up game that you play for a long time. And we really feel that if we could catch those kids early on in a preschool setting and provide them with basics that they need before kindergarten, we are confident that that will have a major effect on our special education numbers as well. So again, about the building project, it's not about our enrollment, it's about our programming. The other piece that I've talked about for the programming that I'd like, that I have figured out for the, our project is the addition of the MD rooms. And those rooms, we have one already here in our district that meets the needs of some kids that if we didn't have that room, we would have to transport them to either Defiance or Archibald or somewhere else where they provide those services that we don't have here. But by having that room here and the right teachers that are trained for that, we can meet those needs. It saves transportation costs, it saves our kids having to be on a bus for two hours a day, maybe, up to two hours a day could be for transportation. And it does help with the cost because those students come, you know, with all the different services that they need, there's quite a cost hooked to those students. So, you know, by having it here, we reduce some of those costs and then, so, and also in the MD rooms, you're only allowed a 16-month spread in the, in the age limit of kids. So once our kids got to a certain age, we had to transfer them to Defiance, which we have a couple of kids that are doing that now. So if we have this other MD room, which we are next year already, we found a room where we can do this, we'll be able to accommodate those kids and we won't have to transport them out either. So we'll have, we're gonna have the two units here for next year, at least for the one year anyway, and see how it goes. So that program with the MD programming and the preschool programming are the two major reasons for the project addition. So I had asked Steve Losinski from Fanning and Howie, the architect, if he wanted to come tonight so that we could go over some questions. I know some of you had some questions on what kind of funding I was looking at to maintain the building, to run the building, and I, I worked on that this month and I came up with a few things. As far as maintenance, I talked to Eric about that and he believes that the whole thing would be an additional four hours of maintenance. Some of that could be absorbed on, with Misty in the morning before we open up the doors in the morning, so some of that can be covered there. Some of it with Randy on his shift, some of it can be covered there as well, but he thinks total would be an additional four hours of maintenance, which, what would that be roughly? A hundred bucks a day?
Yeah, you're looking at $100 daily wages and benefits on that.
For wages and benefits. For utilities, he said it's about 10 cents a square foot, I believe is what Eric came up with. And so that would be approximately 3,200 a month for electric. And then the cost for the high school rooms, there would be no additional, the two high school rooms, there would be no additional employee cost because those teachers we already have, that's Sharon and Tim, that would be located out there, but then that would alleviate an extra room up here for us, for other programming. The MD costs, we're already have that cost here for one year. I get that, oh yes I did. Two MD rooms this year cost us $58,567.53, sorry, one MD room. And that's with three kids. So three kids in it, it costs us $58,567.53 this year.
That was for, for here?
For here, okay.
So the teachers' costs are actually looking at?
No, we're looking at, that's the ES, that room is an ESC room right now. So they charge us a per pupil rate. So that's, that's what they, for the three kids that are in that, that are in that room this year, that's the sum for the, for the per pupil cost. And that's just for the, that's the classroom cost, that's not anything specific to those students. That's just, that's the teacher, the classroom aide, and any associated supplies with that.